Right, it takes a possible college meeting in order to start the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. This work session is basically going to be over bullying. It seems to be a hot topic right now and it's the place that we get dinged about the most, quite on Facebook for sure. And you know, it's something that people catch us at the store and it seems to be a hot topic issue. So I've invited student council, I'm assuming that you guys are student council. I appreciate you guys showing up. Because why have a policy put in place if you guys don't think it's going to work? You guys absolutely need to be the face of this policy and we need to hear from you, probably more so than any adult in this room. So with that being said, you know, we have chief of police here, Peter Rivera, other students and teachers. And we just basically wanted to hear from you, what your ideas are. Is it really, do we have a bullying policy here? I mean, do we have a bullying problem here? Or is it something that, like if something doesn't go someone's way, are they just going straight for that word bullying? Instead of like going through processes of just dealing with things? So we have a, we have a bullying policy in place right now. If there's amendments that can be made that will help everybody out, I'm all for it. But if you guys think that the policy's fine, we just need to make some adjustments on how we, you know, report things and be vigilant to other students that are going through something instead of just kind of standing back. I spoke to Patrick Evada earlier today and asked, you know, does our text messaging system, is it a two-way system? And no, it's not. We can't text, you know, you can't have it like, you know, student can't report back on the text messaging system. But I believe middle school has a Google form, right? And so we've talked about putting that Google form on our school webpage. And that way a parent or a student can report something that they've seen or felt was, you know, wrong. The student was wrong at a school and it'd be anonymous. So I think that's a lot of it. I talked to my sixth grader. I said, do you think there's a bullying problem? And he goes, I saw an incident the other day where two big kids were picking on one girl. And he, and my kid was big. He goes, I didn't know what to do because then it was just going to turn around and be me. So I think that's a lot of it. Things go unsaid because you're worried about retaliation. So if we could get a policy in place or get some better, better communication between students and staff on what's going on, we would benefit from it greatly. So the first person on our agenda that would like to speak is the chief of police, Mr. Peter Rivera.
Thank you. Good evening, after school board and guests in the audience. I'm not, I've read the policy and I understand the school's policies on dealing with situations such as this. And I think it is a problem. You understand it, you know, these are teenagers. I mean, we were all there at one time. They're young kids. It happens. But what do we all want? What do we say that, you know, it's just joking around or it's bullying? You know, or harassment on a day-to-day basis where these kids feel they don't want to go to school. They don't like going to school because, okay, he's going to pick on me again for something. And I just feel like it's, you know, it's something we need to address. And we do address it on our end on a regular basis. And I know the school has taken care of a lot of stuff, however, we don't get notified on a lot of things. And that's fine. I understand the policies and stuff. However, on certain instances, they go outside the school. And we get parents that come to us, they're upset, they reported it and nothing's being done. Which we gotta explain to them that that's a school policy, not a law. But it occurred outside the campus of the school, the school district. And it happened on the streets and now it becomes our problem. The question is, is, you know, we didn't know about this. And so we're dealing with it on one basis here and it was a repeat offense over and over. So how do we come to an agreement with the schools in which we can at least maybe learn something ahead of time that this is happening? And I'm not saying, like I said, I don't want to, I don't want to take away from the schools and I don't want this to become a law enforcement thing that every time something happens to schools, we got to be called. However, I think maybe just a little bit of a notice to us, informing us, this is happening, this is an ongoing thing. And maybe we could do information online, we could maybe even talk to the students ourselves if it's a repeat action. But I think it's, it's an ongoing problem. It's been there for years and years. I mean, my kids won't do this in middle school, in elementary. And me in junior, junior high, middle school, I don't too. But we can remember it and we didn't, you know, maybe not take it so seriously back then. It was considered, you know, kids being kids, you know, we were, we were just teasing each other. But you look back on some of that stuff now, I'm like, well, that probably hurts some kids' self-esteem, bottom down. And we don't want that. We want our kids to be safe. We want them to feel happy going to school. And we want them to enjoy it. And I'm just here to, I'm open to any suggestions or ideas. I had talked to Mr. Johnson, Mr. McKinnon before. And I think we got a good rapport with each other right now. And if there's anything else the board feels that we can do, we're open to any suggestions.
Any questions?
Madam President, so Mr. Director of Chief, so when we're starting to look at side of bullying, it looks like that's more of a aggressive approach where these kids are taking it to social media and attacking the other party. When it comes to that, criminally, how is that taken like?
Well, at that, at that point, you know, that's outside the, the, the school. So we, we take it seriously and it becomes harassment, charged with harassment. And we will, we will make a report if the victim feels it's been, well, any, anytime. We use, the first time it's happened, we take it very seriously. The report is made due to an probation roll-off.
So for instance, if Jane Doe comes in and says, I'm being harassed, bullied. And Jane Doe number two comes up, shows this to our administration. Wouldn't we want our administration to notify law enforcement because now we have a direct threat there that says something's happened? And we're hoping that we're handling the situation in-house, but again, we have an open campus here. And so I'm not only speaking on just one campus, but again, it seems like once the school releases these students out, we really don't have controls. And so again, we, we need to be able to, I think our communication needs to be opened up a little better. I'm not saying it's not, but I think we, we need to have that because again, law enforcement is getting approached at the station. Such as Jane one, Jane two is harassing. And then ultimately you guys are wanting the school to handle it. But then again, we feel, well, not we, but the parents feel that it's not getting addressed properly. They want law enforcement to intervene. And then that's where we, the board, I can only speak for myself, is getting approached at our residence. And I'm not complaining about that, you know, that's what also elected a board to represent the people. But again, they demanding something to be done. And we're trying to encourage them to follow the chain of command. And that's where I was one of the directors to make sure these parents are reading the handbook. Or say, I don't think they're doing it. But again, they sign off on it, but again, they're wanting something done. They want law enforcement to do something, they want school board to do something. So when we're at school board calling down to the people that, the individuals that were in charge of it, they're not aware of it. So again, then we get frustration. Now we get parents that are heated amongst each other. So again, this is starting to become an everyday issue. So I was wondering like, how do we get that communication? And you pretty much just said it there, you know, don't want to be overwhelming, involved in everything. But again, we need to communicate with law enforcement. And then again, also, I think it's like I was just speaking to our superintendents. We need to be able to set some kind of policy or something, a checklist for our administrators to know, to define bullying. Because for instance, Mr. McKinnon may think bullying is one way, but Mr. Johnson may might think it differently. But again, if we had a checklist for administrators to say, okay, this is how it works. Then when a parent comes outraged, they can say, this is what we follow. And this is what counts as bullying. Because one parent's going to think that bullying is one thing and another is going to be like, no, they're just kids. So again, I think we, we can set up a structure for our administrators and a system. I think that'd be great. Thank you.
There's a, there's a definition of bullying and harassment in the actual school board or school board policy. When you look at the definition of harassment means knowingly pursuing a pattern of conduct that is intended to annoy, alarm, terrorize another person. Bullying means any severe pervasive or persistent act of conduct that targets a student, whether physically, electronically, or verbally. And that may be based on the student's actual or perceived race, religion, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, sex orientation, gender, identity, spouse affiliation, physical or cognitive disability, or any other distinguished characteristic or on an association with a person or group, group with any person with one or more of the actual perceived, perceived distinguished characteristics and can be reasonably predicted to. Place the student is reasonable fear of physical harm to the student's person or property. Cause of substantial detrimental effect to the student's physical or mental health, substantially interfere with the student's academic performance or attendance, or substantially interfere with the student's ability to participate in or benefit from the services, service, services activities or purposes provided by the agency, education institution, or guarantee. And then there's also a definition of cyberbullying, of communication, gender identity. And this is all in our schools, the board policy. And that's in your J dash two five five zero. And that's actually in our board policy.
Yeah, I totally agree. I think it's great again, but again, it's like, who's going to determine? You know what I mean? It's like, I interpret it this way, you can interpret it different. So I think if we can give our administrators better tools to be able to determine this because we can all take on it different ways. And I'm not saying that they're, they're not, but again, the problem is there. Law enforcement is getting it.
Would you think that as the principals, I mean, that those definitions are cut and dry? And I mean, if it's in those category, it would be bullying, would it not?
Well, I'm just going to say from experience, we have a little poster that we put in that, that all the schools have. It's just real simple poster and that kind of explains so that when you're talking with someone that says this person has bullied me or this, let's go through the
Actually, I think Sarai can probably present that the best.
Yeah, let's let her.
My robotics team, quite a few members. Whenever you're ready for them, I think they can kind of help you with where we go with this.
And I do want to make the correction. So you know, if a school is aware of any bullying on social media, then we have to take care of it. That's our responsibility along with your responsibility to work together, dealing with it. And that's law.
I don't think we've, I don't think we've had any problems at all. I have never heard of the officers complaining. I think we're notified during the times. But sometimes, like I said, something that, like you said, Mr. Rivera, one parent sees it as a little bit more serious and they come to us wanting us to do it. Now, we don't, we don't push anybody away. Don't get me wrong. We're not, we're not telling people, no, this is a school thing. You need to go to school. We do take a report. We do follow up. We do our due diligence and we do what's necessary. Sometimes we even go to the school. But I think, I think the communication right now is really good. I really do.
And I would like to say about the cyberbullying, I mean, it's a monumental task to monitor. How many kids do we have? From just middle school to high school?
Two hundred and something.
Eight hundred and, oh, middle school to high school, about four fifty.
And I have a little sister who's in fourth grade and she's on Facebook. So I can tell you that it's a monumental task for the school system to sit there and sit through social media, define what is bullying and what's not bullying. And does the school have access to?
Usually it's one of, if we get a report of it and somebody writes it to us, that's the thing. And I'll go back to what Pete said. We haven't discussed anything before this meeting. You do get parents calling you on bullying, am I correct?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, then what do you do? Investigation?
Yes, they do the investigation.
How many times is you see it not the case?
Yeah, it's probably fifty-fifty, yeah. There's, there's some that are and then there's some that actually we see that weren't defined by definition or we end up having the parents involved. And then it becomes even worse, but usually it's about half and half.
Do most of these reports come outside of school?
Yeah, oh yeah, most definitely.
So it's not, it's not getting called from the middle school?
Yeah, it's very few that they'll actually come to us after the fact. Some of the people are pretty satisfied with the way the school handled it. But when they're not, that's when they come to us. They want criminal charges filed and like I said, we do our investigations. And if we feel that it's necessary, we go through our attorney's office. And then subsequently we refer to the June probation rule.
So if, do you, I've heard this a couple times. And I think, so I think people get misunderstood of what the board, what our job is. Our job, there's only four things we can do. We can set policy, approve policy, approve the budget, hire and fire a superintendent. And we have, and I have no problem with anybody coming to me in my office. I get it all the time. This is what I signed up for. I have no hard feelings in it. I feel bad though, when people come to me trying to fix a problem and I'm like, I can't do anything for you. The most that I can do for you is point you back to central office. And I've had it twice where they were told by law enforcement to come to a school board member. And I'm like, I can't help you. If you have to go to central office, there's nothing that I can do for you. I can't conduct an investigation. Ms. Bride or Mr. Borden or Ms. Hodges doesn't answer to me. You know, I can't legally do my own investigation. And I don't, none of us have an educational background. I don't think you'd want a board member doing an investigation. The ones that are vested for it is central office, the principals. That's the only thing that I see. And I feel bad because I do want to help, but my hands are tied.
But ultimately, we're here to, to create policy or set policy or amend policy. So if this policy is not actually working, that's what we, the board, do. So again, that's why we're here. We're trying to get input from every side. If this is actually working, we need to stay proactive. We need to ensure that our student body is comfortably and safe to go to school. And this is what the student body has to do. Is make sure that we have policy that's set in place that they are going to be safe when they're on the care of our hands. And that's the reason why we're here. Again, we don't want to interfere with administration here, but at the same time, we are the voice of the people to be here. When you got elected, you got elected to feed that district's voice. So again, when they bring these concerns up, that's what we're here for. We wouldn't be here to waste anybody's time, but we're here to voice the people's concern and that's why we're here.
Well, this is also put together by legal and it's come straight out of the law, this policy. And like if you go to the stop the bullying dot, it shows what the state requires and everything that is on that website. It goes like state by state. You can look it up. One of the, one of the things we're not going to focus on bullying. It's kind of like putting stronger laws on DWIs. Do you still have DWIs? I mean, things, things are still going to happen regardless if you add, subtract, whatever you want to do with this policy. But this is basically the law in this policy. But like I said, are we going to stop bullying? It's not going to happen. And we just have to deal with it when it does come up to deal with it.
And I think we'll even being proactive is going to be good. And you know, just being informative, being transparent with the people is going to be good. And I'm saying, I'm not complaining about all this. I think this is great. But if there's something that we need to add to it, we, we're creating that policy to assist our administrators. So that's what we're here for, to see if the administrators need more help to toughen this up. And this is what we do as a school in quality, is to create a policy. We don't have to be all leader. We can be the leader. We don't got to be the, you know, follower, but we can be the leader in something. And let's do, let's not wait. You know, when we went to that training and we're getting, let's not be the Yvalde school district. Let's stand up and let's do what's right. Because I hate to be on this board if something happens to any of our students or any of our faculty. Because we just wanted to lean back and say, it's right here now. It's cut and dry. Let's, let's be proactive with it.
Would you, as, as principals, would you agree that most of the time the bullying goes unreported until it gets to a certain point and it's happened for two years?
I, I don't, you know, I don't think so either. A lot of times when it's recorded and you investigate, you find out that it's both students going back and forth. Off the lawn, it's at elementary. And I've got such little kids that you can't say, if you have kindergarten students and one hits, pushes someone and two days later he pushes that another person. I've got, mine's a little bit different. Mine, I mean, those are, I, the A sides definitely, they're little kids. I mean, you have to deal with them. So you have to be very careful about saying they're a bully if, you know, they may need some more guidance, but you can't, I mean, they're little kids. They're, but a lot of the other kids, it's, it's consensual. One starts and the other one and then, and that's usually what it is with mine. I do have a few times when it is.
I guess when I was, because I've heard it before, he was like a complaint and it was a bullying of two years. I'm like, well, have you reported it at all? You know, how long has this been going on? And how can, how can we as a school administration help you if it's not reported? You know, how does that help us? And then I know the other part of it is it does happen outside of school. How is the school supposed to put a whole investigation together when part of it's online? Part of it's outside of school. We only have a third of the information that we're working with. And if it's caught early, I think it, would you agree that it's, it's said and done? But by the time it's been going on for a while, how are you supposed to conduct an investigation that's been going on for six months? Where's the evidence?
I generally handle investigations in high school. You're going to have it both ways, okay? The thing that you have to do is every time somebody comes in, no matter if it gets very menial or not, you have to investigate. All right? There's students in this room right here that could tell you that they've been involved in some of my investigations and stuff. But it has to be every time. You can't just pick and choose what it is, okay? And so I'm over that way. We've had an investigation this year at the high school to where a mom came to this brother's business and said, my daughter's been being bullied for two years. Been going through everything else. I said, well, this is the first time I've heard about it. So we did investigate. We deemed it wasn't bullying because it was just a couple of people making comments. And this girl admitted to us, well, I was having a little bit of that dad and dad's trick. But then you do have harassment. You do have cyberbullying. I prefer, even if it's happening off campus, that we're made aware of it so I can investigate it. Because even if it's happening off school grounds, it's affecting their education. Because those kids don't want to go to school. So we're going to investigate. And Pete can tell you that I have filed harassment charges myself on kids. I file bullying charges myself on kids and stuff like that. So it has to be done every time. You can't just take it as like, oh, it's just, it's not. Now I'm going to say at the high school, probably seventy-five percent of the time it's back and forth, right? And I advise the kids, if they're doing something to you, you need to stop. Because the police are going to tell you the same thing. It's not harassment if you're responding. They're threatening on social media, they're threatening through text messages and you're responding back threatening them, that's not going to be harassment. You need to tell them, stop, leave us alone. And then if they continue to do it, take the screenshot you bring to myself, which probably less than, and it will happen. And a lot of times that happens at high school. I mean, it happens more than most people know about at the high school. But you have to take each and every one serious. So Madam President, I do have a question. So Ms. Ferguson, it's not directed toward you, it's all to them administrators. So you guys can only do so much. You guys got so many employees underneath your belt. How aggressively are we telling our teachers and staff when they notice bullying or anything that's being recorded? Are we documenting it and holding it in file? So if an incident happened in sixth grade and then it started reoccurring again in ninth grade, we actually have, we have, you know, logged here. Are we, are we being aggressive to our staff to tell them like, hey, when you get this, we need to report it. We need to put it in a disciplinary file because again, John Doe could have been bullying on John Doe number two. And things got settled. Guess what? It started back up again freshman year. So we can use that file because then when it's time to fresh start, it's like, hey, we've got a trail here. This is something that's been happening. It's been aggressive. It kind of calmed down. But again, we need to, and I, I know you guys are going to say, oh, we harp on them. But again, are we really making sure that we're doing that? Because again, if we have a case file, then we can, we can build it up. We can probably prosecute them.
So Mr. Lopez, I'm a teacher.
I just, is there?
You know, without an investigation, I don't see how as a teacher Um, you know, without an investigation, I don't see how as a teacher I could label a student as a bully unless I know what's happening on both sides and that's where Coach Ferguson and Mrs. Bright Leslie, that's their administration, that's who I go to if I see something. But as far as me carrying a file or forward for students that I see in class, I, I just don't see how that could possibly work.
Well, no, recording, you know, we don't say recording it to, you know, to the, you know, the dean.
Oh yeah, Mrs. Bright Leslie, Coach Ferguson are very, very blunt. If you see this, you tell us. We have some truckers here.
Well, I just don't want to get, get real life, we don't get real life. And we also need to be training our staff to be a departmental, you know, here. I think we need.
Well, I, I think if you met our staff, we'd be very, very pleased with the way they handle things at high school.
Is it, is it part of in-service? I would think that.
Oh, absolutely.
Do you guys have in-service hawthorne?
Uh, we have one coming up just right.
So you guys have local partners here?
And, and just, uh, so, uh, I, I served on the school board at San Juan for thirteen years, so I really appreciate what you guys do, because I understand how hard this is. But that's also why I'm here too, because when I heard this, I was, I was really taken aback because, um, I do the STEM program, the robotics, uh, I'm in, you know, I'm, I'm the guy, you can ask Mrs. Bright Leslie, I'm in the hallways all the time, I talk to all students. And Akeem is a, Akeem is a big surprise that, uh, it was bad enough to get Apple work session.
Well, it is because we're getting approached. I can speak for myself, I don't know about the other board. When you get them coming to you and you can't go to the grocery store without someone coming and telling you, hey.
Sure, sure, no, like I said, I served thirteen years. That's why I'm the lone girl in the board. So.
Jerry, you speak to your admin. The disciple files are not, I don't think they're passed to school.
No, they're not.
Yeah, we have diploma files at the high school, they have grades and all that. I can speak to the high school, the high school do it kind of the old fashioned way, is I have disciple file on their student. When they get in trouble or we do investigations, they go to the file. And then at the end of the year, they're stored in a box and I think we keep them for, we don't filter them up to five years until the kids are, are gone.
That's what it says in the, the policy.
Yeah.
Four years and then it's, that it, uh, reports shall be distributed for both state and federal, of course.
I mean, we, we do do that at the, the high school. And you're gonna find out with staff, that's gonna be at elementary, at the middle school, at the high school, you're gonna find out the staff kind of follow a little bit of the students, because if we have new staff, they don't always come from that vault and stuff like that. So they're gonna be wanting to be not mentioned. They have better staff, Mr. Evans, uh, some are better teachers, they're more active, being able to see that stuff come forward. This is the same thing, this is the same thing, in training from the beginning. And I can say on, on, through the coaches, we're mandatory, we have to take classes online every year for all the kids and all that stuff, so we're gonna see how it happens, but it's just the same way with your kids, they don't come and report it because they're too shy, don't feel comfortable coming and saying anything or doing this stuff and you don't find that, you have to have the staff too that feel comfortable sometimes to report. Even though they're mandatory reporters, so we have to keep reminding them to do it. And I think at the high school, we do it for each other, I can speak for the other schools, but.
Yeah.
We do it for each other.
Well, that's what my teachers will do, if they suspect something, they'll come to me, they'll notify me, they'll give me an email or come by and talk to me and say, hey, I think there's a situation going on here. And then so then it's my job then, take that information and take it to the next level. And our, our staff doesn't seem to have any problems, uh, you know, bringing that stuff to my attention.
Is there any way, I know sometimes, I think, I think a lot of it is just when it goes unreported, it gets boiled over. I think that's, that's, that's how, when I got a lot of the complaints, it's, it's been unreported. And you have this, this been going on for so long, it's been going unreported. And then the only way that I know to make it easier is, I don't know, a text message, an online form, so they would have to meet person, person. And I think that, it sounds like a lot of times when it is reported, it is taken care of early. It's taken care of early. And if there's any way to make like an online, I don't know, uh, number, email, I don't know, they can report it.
I was speaking to Mrs. Navita about it and she said she could do, go put Google form and put it on our school page.
If you post it around the website.
And I think that would take care of a lot of stuff. I mean, at that point, um, I don't, I don't know how, how else you can make them feel comfortable reporting, I mean, you're just doing it on the computer, you're not even face to face.
Well, because we do that, I've been doing that for the last couple of years to make it a little bit more confidential. Instead of the kids coming down and people saying, oh, they're in the office, filing the statement, look out for that one. So we did it so they could do it and then it's set up so whenever they submit it, Mr. Lucero saw that the other day with his, with his son, as soon as they hit submit, he come and it pops into my email so I can read through it. But, you know, reporting is one thing, then you have to act on it. I mean, it's easy to set up a reporting system like that, but then we have to act on it. You have to go through and read it and that's gonna require us to talk to that kid, bring himself, pay a register statement, let's talk about this. And then we have to make sure we act upon that. And, and then just document, I mean, that's a big thing that we have to do with everything, is document, document, document everything. But I hear what Mr., going back to what Mr. Lucero said earlier, I think you're asking, is there a way that if, if there's a kid in a bullying incident in fifth grade and then all of a sudden eighth grade pops up again? And do we, do we, do I know that there was an incident back then unless, you know, unless the parents tell me? Because they'll say, this has been going on for years and years and years, right? Nothing's ever been done about it. Well, maybe we don't know, maybe I don't know exactly what they've done at elementary and maybe Nicole doesn't know what I've done. So I think what you're looking for is can we have a way to make sure that we document this kind of like a database where we can go back and say, uh, little, you know, little Johnny had an incident with somebody and he said it happened in elementary school. So I can go back and say, well, yeah, there was an incident back there, here's what happened with it.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was talking about when I talked to you principals last week.
Yeah.
Us using that form, which is kind of elementary, but at least that way then, after you investigate, you know, then you can send it on to me.
Yeah.
Uh, now what I don't know, yeah, I'm a little bit unclear about is if we can use names. Because a lot of this, I mean, you may, you know, this kid is, gets into a this kid and then this kid and then this other kid, then it's not a pattern with the same kid, so technically it's not bullying. The kid probably has a behavior problem, you know, no doubt about that. So I think, I think what we're doing with that will help that situation. But it's, but again, I'm, I'm kind of like Mr. Evans, are we gonna record everything that's reported or what's investigated is found to be valid? So, I mean, that's something like we need to think about.
Okay, so then how do you choose if a parent says, well, I want this to be documented? So it's on file?
Well, you can, you can document, document, but if it's not, if it's not fact, I mean, we will document that it wasn't, we found nothing to be fact.
In the investigation, I do have notes and it goes on the student, both students disciple files.
And, and.
It only has the names of the student in this one office and another student, but it goes on there and it stays on there and the notes are the names of the students.
And what the board needs to keep in mind, if you do get approached, the, the, it needs to be cut off and sent back to us. And I think if parents understand that, that, you know, that it's us that have to deal with it, they need to go back to the source. Because I remember one, the attorney, and I think some of you guys remember the attorney comment, but you have to cut them off. You, the board isn't enough to take part in that and they need to go back through the chain of command where it starts.
And I think we have helped out with transparency by, you know, doing the open comments and making sure that people follow the policy and, you know, that we follow the chain of command. And we've had since with that spin and effect for six months and we've had two people actually go through the process of doing it. So I think eventually like you're mad, you want somebody to listen to you, you weren't happy with what they were told. And so then you give them the opportunity to come speak in front of all of us and the media, nobody shows up.
And, and, you know, I've had situations in the board members below who I want to talk to about, you have one parent going on to one and one parent going on to the other, you know, and two different stories. So, you know, that's, that, that's why it's our job to let us do our job to investigate those situations.
So let's say they weren't happy with, and so let's say they would go through the teacher, principal, Mr. Johnson, you. And then let's say they weren't happy, would it come to the board?
They could, yes.
And, and that's where they sign up and that's where we change. And if we had prior logs, would we have to, you know, and you can say, listen, right?
It's, they, they could do public comment.
Still, it's not gonna get a response from us, but like I said, I think it makes people so good that they got heard by somebody that's not part of, part of the.
Mr. Johnson, in our S I O system, there's a way to keep track of the discipline that you can hold back.
Right, right. And then we do that all the time. I mean, when, when, when they refer something up to me, I will have, you know, get reported and I'll look at the.
If it comes from this org, come on.
Go back to every year.
So does all the schools have access to that?
I think, yeah.
Schools do it.
Can the high school get into the elementary part? I mean, we, we have it in each one, but I'm not sure.
I, I believe you can, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Borden used that when I was at the middle school, the communication log in there, and I believe that communication log goes with, with Tyler.
I think you should have to, you may have to log into this specific, because we can log into all the years that we've had Tyler. And I think we'd have to go back and look at it like that.
That's one of the relevant forbidden rules with Tyler.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. What I think about the next system to set that up in.
So Matt President, um, I'd like to hear student volume, student council seat, you know, of the, after you get up there.
Mr. Evans, did you have anything else?
Well, I was here for Soraya, just, that's why I signed up, so she would feel comfortable. Because sometimes when they're familiar with the teacher, their STEM stuff, then they're more likely to maybe speak up and say.
I think that's a good thing about you guys is that you all are all excellent public speakers, so that's why I wanted you to be here. We can hear from you.
Don't hesitate, I'll do that. Well, thank you, I'll try my own, and I'll do it in our high school. So we have, uh, had, um, clarification for bullying recently to, uh, you know, make it more clear for those who don't know, so we have these signs that are already up, you have pulled up here, it says, are you bullying? And it clearly describes when someone does something hurtful on accident and they only do it one time, that's rude. When someone does something hurtful on purpose and they only do it one time, that's mean. When someone does something hurtful on purpose and they do it over and over again, even when you go back and stop or show them, they, they were sending you, that's bullying. Personally, from my experience, I haven't seen much bullying in, I mean, in, um, in my organizations, you know, like for instance, we're robotics, we do get into discussions and sometimes it's a little bit more heated because you have all these different ideas being thrown out. And then one person would be like, oh, I think this is an amazing idea, we're gonna make, um, so many good inventions with this idea. And then the other person says, no, you're not. So then it gets into a little bit of a discussion. But, um, in our organization, but we never had bullying, we never had somebody just do something straight up rude, we, we talk it out, you know? And so I think that's one of the most important things that we learned through this club is just, um, being able to talk out the sessions, you know, and learn that, uh, sometimes you have to get another answer even whenever you are so on your own idea. Um, I think the main thing with the bullying issue is people needed this clarification because I see people being rude, I see people being mean, and then, you know, uh, as teenagers in high school, you see your emotions start to rise high and they'll just act out. Um, but some, most of the times it's just them being rude or mean, it's not bullying. I haven't witnessed much of that. But I just wanted to say through, through the clubs, I think, um, clubs are important in this, I haven't seen much bullying in the clubs. If anything, the clubs have helped people to do better and know the standards that, um, are expected of them. So. If there are any questions.
Well, you're just talking about the club, what about, what about the overall picture? What do you see? Uh, just students.
Of course, I see them being mean and rude, you know, one person will get mad over, you know, those kindness things, like you'll accidentally bump into them in the hallway and then it'll become a big thing, or you'll like drop something that you're handing to them and it'll be a big thing. But, um, I think the main thing is just like, they'll just take that as rude or mean and call it bullying. The main thing I think we need to focus on with the students is clarification. And, um, learning, I think, even just how to calm down your emotions, because when those emotions run high, they get mad, they go do something, you know, they'll say, oh, I'm just gonna start a fight with you. And I think the main thing is even just if it's a small issue that really got them mad, just even being able to talk it out and, you know, you see, like a media owner just saying, well, I felt that we did this and just being able to talk it out, I think that would.
And most of the time you see that as a one-time deal, that, that's in the heat of the moment.
Yeah, I think that's the main issue, just, um, and, you know, suffer all of them, of course, there have been, have been cases of bullying, but compared to, um, I guess I would call this identification of what bullying is, I think it's mostly just being rude and mean at times and classifying it as bullying. So just this clarification, I think this is gonna help us a lot with like, you know, just kind of being able to think on that and.
So would you say for the most part that the kids at the high school get along great?
I, I would think so, you know, just, it is just the, I think, like a big thing, just getting mad and then doing something, I think acting out, like if he had something, that would also kind of be like, uh, reminds you just to think before they act. But that's a big thing, just like doing whatever and not thinking before.
Thank you, thank you. That, that, thank you. That clarifies a lot, because I think when we hear it, it's like, oh, this is a huge problem, and then you're like, no, he just bumped into his arm, it wasn't even that big of a deal, he just was having a rough day and overreacting. Because we hear a lot of complaints, we don't really get to hear the good stuff. And sometimes for us, that's all we hear and it's like, this is a big problem and then, you know, when in reality, we're not, I mean, I don't, I don't go to school, so I don't know how to know what it's like.
And I think that's an advantage that the high school has over the middle school, if we don't have very many electives and you don't play sports and you, and you don't get involved and you don't get that structure, because you could be the kid that's terrible at something and all of a sudden you find robotics and I bet you could turn your life around in a split second. So I think, uh, in middle school right now, I mean, you're just getting, you just get to do what you get to do, you don't really have a, I don't know how you would say it, but like you don't get to choose, choose what you, you know, what you want to be at that point, it's pretty much set for you, so you're still looking for yourself. You're not allowed to make very many decisions on what you might want to do, so maybe adding electives to middle school, adding more stuff to middle school, soccer, soccer club. If we're never gonna get soccer put into the school system, a soccer club would be awesome.
And we, um, Dave, I mean, uh, we are implementing some robotics, we're into the, the other grade, like we're just starting a robotics team and, um, for the, oh, we did one of the challenges, you know, in the middle school. And next year we hope to have one team at the elementary level as well for a couple different ages.
Well, now we should release the news. Our STEM team has some just amazing news, but until it's released at the national level, but within that, we actually have to explain our comfort resolution, which is pretty amazing because, uh, even, even the kids who are considered the good kids have very, very strong opinions, especially when you put them together. And, uh, yeah, they, they get pretty heated and most of the time I just back off and, and wait. And so far, I'm, I'm wood and all that, but, but I, I just can't wait till, I'm sorry, I have to brag a little until, uh, because it's either gonna be announced on, I don't know for sure, Good Morning America or one of those, so it's a pretty.
We got some big news coming up.
Yeah, so, but anyways, and I also wanted to say thank you for this all.
Yeah, because I had a slip yet.
Yeah, I had a slip.
It's hard not to slip, I swear.
Yeah, I think sometimes we forget it, some of these kids don't get that at home, so you can't really expect them to just come to school and turn it around at school hour. So it is important for them to join clubs and stuff and probably must find their niche. And then, you know, when you get them dedicated to something, they'll do anything for you.
But I, I think Soraya hit the nail on the head, because, uh, that's, you know, for a long time I was the only male teacher in that whole part of school. And coaches busy a lot, and so just the presence, you know, you try to just put yourself there to stop things before they happen. And sure, you'll have one football player bump into another football player, emotions run high, but you only see it once, you know? And you can't call it bullying, because one will call one a name, the other one will call a name back, and, uh, you know, you can only, you can only deal with that stuff so much where you, you know, send them to coach every time. So sometimes with the teaching, you just have to, hey, knock it off. They go on to class, you know, two days later they're playing again. But as far as seeing one bigger kid or smaller kid or whatever, or group of kids just pick, pick, pick what I would consider bullying and, and by the definition and all that, that, that's what, that's why, to tell you the truth, I'm here and I'm also here because I want to support these guys, I just don't see it. I mean, uh, of course, I don't, I don't go on social media, I don't accept kids' invitations, so I'm not on Facebook with kids, so I don't see that. But as far as in the hallways, I just don't see it.
And I want to bring something up to the point that he did make, these teachers are taught, even when they come out of college and, and by administrators, administrators can't handle every little thing that comes along. So those teachers are taught to deal with what they can in their classroom, escalate things, teach them to go to the principal's bar. They see something small, they think it's gonna get big, send them to the principal, because these guys would have somebody in their office, it could be aligned, it's like at the doctor's office, we said, get in. So, and teachers need to deal with, two kids, if they start calling each other names, teacher needs to deal with it. If they find that they can't deal with it and it keeps happening, that's where the administration.
And I, and I think there's something in there that leaves it open to you guys, because, I mean, you guys get to see them, "Hey, I know this kid's having a bad day. I know there's something going on at home." And I know that, I know there's built-in logo for you as teachers to assess it, "Hey, he's just having a bad day." Like Mr. Evans said, you have to, uh, because, I mean, it's just the world we live in, I, I, I hear customers. Uh, you know, and if I say, "Hey, watch your mouth," and they say, "Sorry, Mr. Evans," I don't take anything further, because I don't feel like there's a whole lot of need, uh, you know, what, what good is gonna come out of it, other than taking up valuable time? And like you said, the, the young person might be having a bad day, uh, some of them speak like that at home, and so it just pops out. Uh, you know, they don't, now, if they continue and they're disrespectful, yeah, they, they get to go see coach, they get to go see Mrs. Brian Leslie, I don't, you know, I don't, uh, put up with it, but.
Well, one of the issues is, as soon as they get an earshot, that hatred, they're using them, and you, and, and all of you are aware of that. I mean, we live in a community that we're aware of, so it just common sense.
But I'm glad you guys get to see what I get to deal with every day, which makes my job so important.
I know she didn't point at your wife there.
She has to deal with him.
My wife's like a totally different guy.
Aaron, you made a good point when you said that teachers handle these things. You guys have given us two days in August of Great Capturing Kids' Hearts training, which works through that. Everybody in this room went through that, that's an administrator or a teacher, some of us have been trained more than once.
What's that deal with?
That deals with classroom management, that deals with how to handle kids without taking it to this next level of us here. So it's working with those students and finding out, it's building relationships and moving forward with students. Even if they are, like Mr. Evans says, a little rough around the edges, you have to find the good in them. And I think that's where To Can Carry has a huge advantage. Um, one thing that Mr. Evans didn't point out with these kids is he has huge parent involvement. And, and these clubs can be everything that they can be, and they can be their family. But Mr. Evans meets pretty regular with parents as well, do you not? Because this is pretty, this is pretty intense stuff that they're dealing with, and he, these are still minors. And he still does represent that with the parents just as much as the students, which I think is extremely important. This community needs a partnership with our parents, we need to build those relationships. And I know it's hard, because you have parents that have disliked each other for generations, but guess what? You still have to get along, and there's places you do that, at school and in our communities. I know Mr. Wallace saw firsthand a homecoming football game. That probably is where I would say we have the least amount of supervision, because there's very few of us to do that. And that's the one thing that if this board wanted to address something, I think you should address unaccompanied children at school activities. It's not a five-dollar babysitting for three hours, and, and that's what it seems like we've become. We've become an easy babysitting service for five bucks, and they run wild, and that's when the nonsense starts. They're not in line at the concession stand, they're not going to the bathroom, they're just running around, texting, showing this, doing that. And that's where it becomes a big problem for us. And there's only so much we can do, there's only one of me, you could have every teacher in this facility or on this campus there. And it's not gonna control it unless we have some buy-in from parents. So when we do have a situation, the first thing I do is, especially if they're middle school or even high school, I take their IDs and then I deal with them the next day. I send them home with their parent, okay? If their parent's not there, I tell them, "You call your parent, your parent needs to come pick you up, we'll deal with it on Monday." One, that stops the emotions that run high, like Pete said, that stops all of that, everybody gets a chance to reflect and think about it. And then we come back and we agree that, yep, there was a situation, usually both parties agree to disagree and we move forward. But I, I know Mr. Wallace saw firsthand just how chaotic that can be without some supervision. And there's only so much we can do, it takes parental instruction and involvement there as well. So that would be something that this board should entertain, is maybe looking at unaccompanied students at activities, because that's when things happen.
So, Ms. Brian Leslie, what do you, what do you suggest? Create policies so our student bodies, if your parents are not attending with you, you're not.
Well, I guess that would be something that we would have to sit down and then discuss.
The younger kids.
Yeah, the younger ones, you know, high school age, we can handle that.
Strong on that, that, that could kind of curve back to babysitting hours.
I, I think it would help some, I think probably the most important part is to, that they need to be educated, parents and students, while you're going to the game. It might be to hang out with your friends, but it also needs to be, you need to watch the game, you need to cheer your teams on. You, you don't just need to come to stir up the mess and the muck that begins what, you know, "He talked to me and he didn't talk to her." I mean, we see it all the time, do we not? And then it drags over into our school, and that, that's where I think a lot of this happens, is that unsupervised, you know, a, a little bit more parental involvement. Where we do have a situation, I can say, "Hey, you're middle school, why don't you go find your parents and go sit down with them for the rest of the game?" So we don't have any more of this. Instead, I can't really do anything with them because I don't have any parents, all I can do is send them home. So, that's something we need to look at.
Well, I totally agree, you know, if you have a child there, you know, and they didn't have consent for you guys to watch them, knowing that they're there, it's kind of like neglecting them.
Absolutely, yeah.
You're neglecting the kids, so I.
And, and they're there for our protection, we have to provide that protection, but, you know, when they're in the bathroom and, you know, they willingly walk in there to go to the gym, or outside in front of the gym, or over at the park, I mean, it, it gets drug out of the stadium, out to the park. And then it's totally out of our hands, so.
I'm glad that you brought that issue, because again, that kind of stems from the bullying, you know, because two parents brought their kids up because they wanted to have some free time. Again, and then little Johnny goes home and says, "I was picked on this person, but why don't you there to watch your kid?" So I, I think, I encourage this board to really just take that up and, and, and see, I know we're gonna get slack on it, but again, that's absolutely right, you know? Where, where three administrators trying to manage two hundred kids.
It's an impossible.
I agree with you, I, you know, again, and then, again, it stems out from you guys, it goes into law enforcement, again, that's back to us again. So I, I really encourage that, I don't know how we could do that, probably have to get legal to, give us, so what, I'm discriminating.
I can tell you that some school districts from middle school down, a lot of them is middle school. Um, you charge adults and the kids at the high school five dollars to get a game, they charge middle school kids ten.
Really?
To try to deter them from coming, and it's ten dollars if they're under ten by a parent. If they come up to a parent and it's wrong, but if they show up to a gate, they'll have a parent, and they're not a high school youth, then they have to pay twice.
Do that, and then we got.
I mean, that's, there's multiple schools that have gone with that, I mean, because it's, it's, the, I'm not saying anything bad about Lending, but it's, it's middle school age down. They're not there to go watch a game, they're there to go have fun, run up and down the court, run up and down the sideline, go and try to play football over by the restrooms. You know, I, I constantly walk over to the other side of the field with the visitors, because their kids are always wanting to get out of the field, put balls around, something like that, and kick them off the field, so it's.
So how do we do that? Again, you know, because some kids travel with their, with their uncle or brother to come over here, so how do we, how do we fix that? You know, but again, I really think that's an issue, because that will hop was also curved down the tool, because a lot of the bullying is happening outside the classrooms. Because they, they know they're being monitored in the classroom, again, if you go to the high school football game, homecoming, whatever it is, it, then it comes to force the school back into it. And I think that's a great approach, you know, we'll be pride with it.
Again, but the way, the way it gets fixed, if you, if the board wants to change that end policy, it goes on an action item instead of being built through the readings, then you start changing the wording. How, so you either add that, if a, if a child is of middle school or down, they have to be accompanied by a parent, or, so it needs to be discussed. There's no action taken here tonight, all we're doing is discussing. But I, I would put it on an action item, and you know I don't, you're aware I'll be here, you guys start discussing it. Then we send it to our, and they look at it to make sure we're within our bounds.
We ban multiple kids from the middle school every year from the team game highs of sports.
Once there's an altercation, then they're not allowed back for the remainder of that season.
Again, Mr. Gordon and Mrs. Hodge, we're not trying to pick on your guys' kids.
We, we've been around these kids most of our adult lives, we know how they are.
So, we're gonna, to maturity, we've gotta figure that out, because again, how's that gonna work at the middle school though? You know, we, we want to support our friends, and so, again, we, we gotta be careful how we do, because if it can bite us at the other end, we, we took care of it at the high school, then what would we do?
You know, it's interesting, like, football games, and middle school football games doesn't seem to be quite the issue that it is at high school games. Because the high school games are the big draw, right? Middle school football games, only people that come are the parents of the players and whatever.
There's not many people in the school, it's just, just the player, I played football.
There'd be.
Their games are actually pretty big this year, if they actually, those kids go sit in the bleachers and watch the football, they're not running all day.
Even JV, I remember playing JV football on a Saturday, nobody there.
So, I guess before we go move forward with this, I guess we hear the rest of the people that signed up to talk to.
Ms. Brian? What, I'm supposed to, you signed up to speak? Just in.
How long, I signed wrong. Alan, you have anything to say? Go ahead.
Long paper.
So, Mrs. Hodge, and your, you know, your counselor, any input, I know it's been all positive, but, you know, wouldn't?
Well, I have, I get a little bit of everything from students that I see of all ages that, um, and I, I'm not saying that teachers and staff are not doing what they're supposed to do. I, I, I back y'all a hundred, I'm sure everything is going how it's supposed to be going. Um, I know a lot of the kids that I talk to, you know, they, I repeatedly hear nothing's getting done about it. But also, it's, it comes back to the discussion that we had a while ago, is that we don't know, you know, teachers and staff, it's like, is this bullying? Has this, you know, are they having a bad day, like, are they just tit for tat, you know? But I do hear a lot of, like, I, I don't want to say anything because nothing gets done, so I don't know what to do. Um, but I think that this, um, trying to keep tabs on, like, I tell, I tell my kids, listen, you're gonna build a, build a reputation of yourself. When you go from one grade or one school to the next, people are gonna know, we're a small community, people are, the teachers and the staff are gonna know, this is the kid that's gonna give you a hard time, because I've heard about them, or I've seen what's going on, or this student's gonna give me, you know, it, it's gonna be fine. So what kind of student do you want to meet? And so I think trying to figure out how we can keep track of, I mean, they're, they're gonna have a track record. And if it comes with, you know, if, if you're harassing someone or you're bullying someone, or, you know, you just pick on somebody, like, I think that gives me to know that that's gonna follow you along. So if there's like a fight or something happens, we're gonna pull your record of, just like criminals out there. When you have a record that shows that you're not very credible, you know, that this, this is what you've been doing, and I think that's gonna be very beneficial, because these kids are not gonna wanna, they're gonna wanna defend themselves, but if they've got a long list of trouble that they've been in, and it's been proven, and, you know, multiple kids or whoever have come up and said, you know, this kid is bothering me.
That may be something else the board may want to look at, just read your policy, didn't that look at it? Because usually bullying is classified where it happens to one person several times. Maybe you need to consider one, that person that she's talking about has picked on eight people this year and pushed them around or shoved them or something like that. Or it may not be just one person, and then you put, you, you probably have those, probably about the same person every time, and you really can't go back to the bullying, because it didn't happen to either three times, or both three times. It's happened to both once, but happened to him the next day, you the next day, you the next day. Maybe you need to look at something like that to add to that. And, and I really need to look at this, and we need to look at to see, even if it needs to go on the bullying policy, because on that attendance at the game, we may want to look at to see what policy that needs to go on, and we not need to go on to the bullying, um, policy, does that make sense to the board?
But something came out of that.
But, but I think something that I will put this back on there, then, uh, if you look at that to see, or we need to put that on the attendance at games, I don't even know if we have a policy on that.
I'm sure we have something about.
See, I will, I can see, but then I'll put the bullying back on there for that discussion, maybe principals, what do you think about that? Where you have one student, that you have multiple kids come in a year that that student.
That's the kid that you know that's a repeated offender, I mean.
And it may not be the same child, but it's like, okay, this.
Yeah, yeah.
As for sharing, who's a very law enforcement.
I think it makes a lot more sense when they come to us, "Hey, this happened here at the file for the school to share," instead of just giving you, "Here, here's twenty things that happened today." You know, that doesn't make any sense, yeah.
Well, isn't it, you gotta be careful, isn't like, there's a principle that you gotta be careful what you release, right?
As, as a school, I can look at it, I just can't release it to anybody else.
So how, how would we work in conjunction with law enforcement to say, "Little Johnny over here?"
They have the same law as we do, we work together, I mean, when they come in, they know the child's name, because they're working.
We, we, we encourage every time one of the officers handles something that's outside the school, they go visit with somebody and let him know, "Hey, this, we got a report of this, so you're aware of it," so they're not left in the dark.
So, I'm sorry, does that mean like, if, when we're told, like, there's a video that, like, like, if I went in and my daughter was in a fight, I can't view that because there's other students that were maybe there? But that means like you and law enforcement?
We, we have, we have allowed parents to view it, we just can't make a copy of it.
Okay, okay.
We can't make a copy of it.
Okay.
We are starting to allow on some of it, not everything, it just depends on what situation to view, but, uh, the law says, no copies. And our legal says, don't make a copy. We are guiding, so that, uh, so I'd, I'd have to work on getting more, uh, seminars or whatever, like, do they have, you know? Every, every night we have to remind these kids about bullying, I think what Mrs. Hernandez and the other law enforcement did on that presentation, I think it's great, because I've had some kids go in, they're really scared like what to do on the phone now. So I think it's great, but it would confuse the reminder that we're watching you, your child out there. I think they're reminded all the time, uh, with these teachers. You know, I talk to the teachers in my house, and I do remind these kids, it better not be happening in my, in my room. And I think teachers do that all the time, because like they say, "You see the mean stuff, right, girls, am I right, students? Do you get reminded all the time this is not going to happen?" Okay, so, so that's already happened. Like I said, I, I, I think we need to look at a policy that boards the attendance at games with the kids, then I'm gonna put the bullying back on there. And I think that may be something that needs, needs to change, it is not part of the definition of bullying, but if you never repeat a offender that is multiple times, it's enough. And I, and I think that's maybe we'll.
Well, I really like what Mr. Ferguson is doing, how he builds it up to harassment, I think that's great, because then guess what, we're going to JPO's office, we'll start getting criminal charges, the parents will start getting involved, because now that I, I don't want my son to be having criminal record, I'm doing all, because, you know? It's there, once it gets built, it's there, you're not cleaning that up.
Anything that contains any part of criminality, we call them. Drugs, alcohol, harassment, bullying, if it's, if we verify, we call them.
And the other thing to, to the board, when, when you do get a call, you know, had a parent in the last month say, "Well, I went to Mr. someone, someone three years ago, didn't do anything about it." Well, they didn't go this time, once something happened, they need to go every time, and if states it in here, they need to report it every time to that administrator, to the teacher, however they got to do it. That teacher is legally responsible, take that principle, and, and that way, the board can send them to us and work start.
Back to Nebraska, I guess, so just changing another person to multiple people, is that what's happening?
I, I, I think that needs to happen, because you do have those kids out there that they're just bullying, I'm sorry, they're, you know, with anybody that's like.
So my question is, that kid that is just a bully, and if we have a student that's reported and followed all protocol, and that kid has just had enough, and decides, "I'm gonna bloody this kid's nose," and he will leave me alone after that, both those kids are suspended. How is that, like, is that above you guys, like, how does that work?
It's, it's legal, legal puts our policies together, if the other one engages, if there's engagement by the other, then, I'm not gonna get into my feelings on that policy. Because if there, if, if the other student engages at all, then it goes both ways.
And most parents will tell their teenagers that, "Don't, don't be the victim, but you're gonna pay the consequences," and they're, most parents are okay with that.
We would much rather prefer that that does not happen.
Yes, I'm.
But what it does.
And that is, and I'll be straightforward, telling them, when the kids get a fight, if you really wanted to fight, you might do this in school, right?
Yeah.
My, my question to you is, which, it's gonna be somebody else here pretty soon, though, is, if you have, if you have a child that comes to you, do you think it's verified bullying? Is there any way that you try to encourage them, like, you bring them in to encourage them to come to us?
Always, every time.
Because I, I'm gonna say ninety-five percent of the time that either I or Colby have a bullying allegation, we've never heard of it before.
Yeah, and I believe that too.
Can, can I ask a question?
Definitely.
How many have you had probably this year?
The bullying troop, zero.
Zero.
We've had some allegations.
How many, I know you can't give us the, how many have you had?
I probably have about four.
Okay, so, so that.
I want to say something else, is, these parents too, that come in and complain to y'all, there was nothing done about that. We cannot ta, talk to, if it's Mrs. Bright Wesley that comes in about her child, I can talk to her about her child. I'm not gonna tell her what I did to Mr. Gordon, or Mr. Gordon's child, and I'm not gonna vice versa, they don't have a clue what was done to that, the punish, or punishment, or what the consequences were.
Because at the high school, if it was a second fight, that's gonna be totally different, if a kid was engaged in one fight, that would be suspended. Because at the high school, if it was a second fight, that's going to be totally different. If a kid was engaged in one fight, that would be suspended for, if they both fought, it would be eight days. If the second fight, what is it, 20, 20 days?
Yeah, so the one that's doing the fight for two days.
If they've been in two fights with two different people, it's going to be suspension, and then they say, nothing's done about it, but they don't know that. Now, at the high school, you probably do, because they don't show up for 20 days in class.
Uh, as far as, I can speak for myself, I do try to, you know, spill the water, because sometimes their parents are so frustrated, they just want somebody to listen to them. Give them a bathroom, or whatever they want. And I, you know, they, they tell them like, we want to know what they did. And when, when we finally tell them, I speak for myself, I tell them, so would you want them to know what they did to your child? And then they sit back and like, no. But I can say for myself, I, I try to defend our district as much as I can. But again, I think it takes where, we need to just be more patient and listen to them. You know, we don't, gotta be right away and giving them action, whatever. So we need to be able to have that earphone, because sometimes these families are just broken.
You know, Mr. Hodges, um, we've actually had a couple of sessions at the high school, it's been several years, it would have been pre-COVID, where we actually had mediation, where we had both parents, both students, everyone sit down at the same table, and I had my high school counselor mediated that. And we made some common ground of how things were going to move forward. So that can be done, and I guess, Cassie, if you could help us with that as well.
Definitely.
I think if we could move forward with some, some mediation and maybe stop some of this, maybe we could build those bridges, like you said, in the small community.
I think, because we all live here together, you know, we're all in the same neighborhood, so we need to start working together.
I'd like to remind the board something, when, when a parent calls you, you sit there and let them talk to you for 20 minutes? And let's say they go through the chain of command after that, you have to recuse yourself if they come in. You cannot, you cannot sit here. So if they call three board members, and you sit there for five minutes and listen to them, you're recused. You just broke your authority as a board.
Well, you got to recuse yourself if they appealed the, the penalty decision.
Right. If they appeal, if they come to the board, that, that, and that decision would have to be two thirds, or whoever did not. So, so you, you need to be careful as a board member doing, doing that and overstepping that.
Have we yet to see that happen yet here at this district, where a parent's not satisfied with, uh, the penalty that you had assigned to them, and they want to take it up to the board to get that?
I've had them come, but I haven't had the board members actually, they haven't talked to the board members prior. Yes, I've had that process, yes. So I just want to remind you guys as a board, it will get you in trouble sometimes too, so you have to be careful.
So the other thing, you know, just as a, as a teacher that talks to these parents a lot, um, you have to realize that they're human too. So when they come to you, they've taken their child's point of view, and they teach history, so always teach that, two sides of the coin. And so sometimes, some, I will assign a bad grade, and I'll have a parent come and say, whoa. And they're, they'll say, well, my child said this. And I'll say, let me send you a copy of the papers, since if they're a child, I can do that. I never hear from them again. Because they've taken their child's side before they've actually looked into the, what's going on. And I have that happen a lot, and I'm not trying to be mean, but I, I have met some parents who are less mature than the child, but they're defending them. And I'm, I'm sorry. And, and so sometimes even when it comes to bullying, um, you know, I, I hear the kids talk about, well, my mom posts it on Facebook.
Oh, my gosh.
And blah, 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 and I knew that this girl, blah, blah, and I'm like, why would your mom do that? She's supposed to set the example. So I'm just, you know.
So, so Mr. Evans, when you hear a student tell you that, what do you, do you just overhear it, or do you bring that up to?
Uh, it's something I, there is no action about. I mean, I just, it goes in one ear and out another. I wish my hearing wasn't so good sometimes, with what kids are talking about going through the call with. But a lot of it's none of my business, because if it's not against the law, not against school policy, it's none of my business. Unless they're disrupting the learning process, then it is my business. So, and that's where I, that's where I as an instructor have to kind of draw those lines, because I can't get drawn into their emotional drama as an instructor. That's not my, that's not my role.
And I think that's something where a board needs to remind parents, hey, it doesn't help your case when you're cussing and you're yelling and you're going on Facebook, you're not helping your child's case whatsoever.
Now, if there's any threat, if there's any sign of anything, absolutely, that's my job to report that immediately to Mrs. Bright Wesley, Coach Ferguson. Please don't, don't think I'm ignoring these kids, because I'm not. It's just, uh, when you have 200 kids walking by in the hallway, you hear things. And if it's nothing illegal, nothing, you know, I mean, maybe uncomfortable to hear, but you know, you just can't take that stuff every time to administration. I mean, it's just, you know, if there's nothing good going to come out of it, and you're not going to stop. I mean, if you hear a cuss word come out of a group of 20 kids, I'm not going to jump in the middle of them when they're on their way to class and go, who said that? You know, it just does no good. But if I know who said it, yes, I address it, rule it, done. As long as they don't talk back and they're polite, say, yes, Mr. Evans, I'm sorry. If they say, you know, stick it up, whatever, you know, then they'll take it to the next level.
And dealing with, uh, dealing with these situations, it's ironic too, that a lot of the stuff, and I, I, I don't get on social media, I don't read, I don't follow all this stuff either, but when you hear all the reports of what the parents get on and say, and what they say about our schools, and staff, and administrators and stuff, they're complaining about the bullying that goes on with their kid, but then in turn, they're kind of doing the exact same thing back to the staff, just doing it online. And I understand that they're emotional, because that's their babies, and there's mama bears and daddy bears and stuff. And sometimes what they don't understand is that, uh, this may be her kid, and she is up in arms over it, but you know what? And she's up in arms about her kid, and it's two sides of the same coin. Well, me as principal, they're both my kids, you know? She's only concerned about what happens to her kid, she's only concerned about what happens to her kid. But as administrator, we are concerned about both of them, because they're both our kids, you know?
So Mr. Gordon, do you have a school counselor at your school, uh, that can help you with this, you know?
You know, not like Mrs. Cardwell, we don't have a full-time counselor. Neither does Mrs. Hodges. We do have a counselor, but it's usually aside, they come down, how many days a week? Three, two?
She comes more than they for ours, and then sees kids all the time.
Yeah, that's the same.
We do request more, we need to. So, uh, Mr. President, um, go ahead, Mrs. Benavides, I hope you're not sitting back there, but, uh, so how do we get that system that Mr. Gordon has for all the districts, so, and even if it works at K, so we get a student that wants to report bullying?
If that's what, um, the idea we decided, Patrick posted it on the website. It's a Google form, like, when I was, it was posted at grade.
It's very simple. I just, in fact, I've got it in there. We have it in our Google classroom for the grade levels, so all kids have access to it there. You know, so it'd be nothing for them. I put it on the district website.
Is it a notification that you receive, or is it just like an email?
It has to be, yeah, we have to designate who receives that.
Right, on the Google form, you attach who, uh, gives notification of it. And so, I don't know, the, the only hard part would be kind of to decipher. To, the middle school reported it, and then it would only go to the middle, like, we might have to have three separate forms, otherwise they would get all the forms. So there'd have to be a high school one, a middle school one, and a middle school one.
I think that's the way we could.
If the board is willing, can we have that done? So on the.
I, I could do that, this, this is not going to succeed. I can do that. I mean, it's, we're working on one.
You know, we have our grade assets right here. Next time there's a sibling that's in middle school or elementary, if they hear what she has to say, they might start taking it a little bit, you know? You hear it from the adults, blah, 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 blah. But you hear it from your peers, the people you're looking up to, who you go watch at these games and stuff, and you hear it out of their mouths, and it's like, okay, well, maybe I'm being a little dramatic about this. Or maybe I haven't been dramatic enough about this. It can go either way. But I think if you get more peer involvement, and like I said, definitely more parent involvement, I mean, it's, it's awful, it's never going to go away. We've had bullies since the Bible, you know, so it's, we're not going to fix it, but we can probably put a good bandaid on it.
So Mrs. Bright Wesley mentioned the capturing kids' hearts thing, and I really encourage y'all to look at that. It's been great. Uh, if you were to walk through my classroom, I teach six classes, and there are six contracts posted on the wall that I developed with my kids. Not, I didn't just force it on them. They actually gave me the words. So we would ask four questions, you know, how do you want to be treated by me? How do you, how do you want to be treated by me? How do you want to treat each other? And how do we solve things when there's conflict? And then I had the students go up on the board, they wrote down a whole bunch of stuff. And every time, respect, 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 respect. And then there might be some changes like active listening, or, you know, all this kind of stuff. And then we'd take a big white board, I'd have the student that had way better handwriting than me, write all of these down. And then I'd look everyone from the United, say, are you guys good with this? Can we live with this? Is this our contract between me, you, and each other? And they would all go up and initial it, put it up on the wall. And only the one time this year, if I had to ask a student, I said, remember, you know, you, you told me, you're a young adult, and that's how I tried to treat them. I said, so as, as, as an adult to an adult, you agreed to this. And you see right there where it says respect, but when you were saying that word across the room to the other student, do you think that means that? And you're like, no. Sorry, Mr. Evans. Boom, you're banned. And I think it worked out really, really well, because they own it. It's not me pushing it on them. They decided. And it, it, and it's a true contract, it's a social contract, you know? And the culture of our school is actually showing it.
And that's district-wide too, because that training was a district-wide training. So what he's talking about, teachers all across the district have done with students.
Well, and it's also on our VASH plan. It's one of our action plans that, uh, by the first 30 days, that we have one action, uh, strategy for capturing kids' hearts that a hundred percent of the staff is using. And so as we went through and checked off the 30 days, that a hundred percent of our classroom teachers have a social contract. And so you should probably ask your kids, if you have kids that, or anyone that's going to school, if they have a social contract.
And we not only have the capturing kids' hearts, but we've been practicing PAX, and it was a program that was brought to us through, um, human resources over Mexico. And it just kind of, they both are very similar. I don't, in ours, you may see PAX. It may say PAX or social contract, but all, all of our students, I don't believe I was in one classroom that didn't have one and the other evolved up.
And that helps with social engagement too, because I can remember Kristen bringing home, you know, the PAX, a little certificate, and another student wrote, today, I witnessed Kristen do this today, and you did a great job, or something like that, so.
Two.
Yeah, so. First time I heard you have PAX, I was. They just.
I do want to say our own technology, uh, monitors our computer systems that the students have, yes. Patrick, uh, where's the, Mr. Hodges, like, he needs to, uh, put GoGuardian, and so anything, it, any type of situation comes straight to Mrs. Bright, the scientists.
2:30 in the morning, we had one come through, calling Veronica.
Done on a school device, it is, it is reported directly to Patrick.
Let me explain to you how well that system actually works, so, so you can, can understand that. Veronica and I had a conversation because we had an alert that came through. Patrick actually picked it up for whatever reason, he was working on something. My health teacher was teaching the unit on mental health, and the kid was Googling suicide, because he needed to do some research and some facts, and things that went with that. That popped a trigger, and they're calling me at 2:30 in the morning, and Veronica and I are trying to find this parent. I'm like going through the computer, I'm calling the cops, we're doing a welfare check, but Veronica had to help me there because the, uh, the parent was only, uh, she only spoke Spanish. So it was a bit of a situation where I, Veronica, we were able to communicate. But you, you have some great systems in place. Your, your technologists and your admin above us have put in some things that protect your students. And, and it worked very well that day. Thank God it was nothing, but it sure could have been something, and we didn't want it to be that. And, and the minute that hit, I mean, we were all, 2:30 in the morning, we were, we were firing on all cylinders.
And it was triggered, it was triggered by the keyword suicide.
Suicide, yeah.
Patrick alerted her. So there is, it's been implemented in our school that, with our own devices, that bullying, words like that, it, it does kick it off, yeah.
Uh, so what I'll do for the, for the next board meeting, uh, this week, I'll give a little, try to make some recommendations for the board, maybe some wording that they think will fit best for the bullying. And if the board wants to move forward with the, the middle school part, discuss it, we'll see what policy best fits that. I don't think it's necessarily the bullying policy, but I think it probably needs to be one of the different policies.
What about implementing just like a student section, and just roping off that section, just kind of corral all the kids that aren't supposed, or you can kind of, I know, that's like.
Finding very cool.
Yes, but you know, even have some of these other kids, like be, be vigilant at those designated areas, like, hey, you know, I know you're not here.
From my being to the volleyball team that did that, because we all know, sitting on by the concession stand area, we want to feel so popular, people at the concession stands, we move the mall down.
Yeah.
And that's, and volleyball, which will probably continue, basketball, that will possibly put student section up there, just so it's on that monitor.
So we, we do.
There's bathrooms, and concession stands, and all that stuff, where they're running around, and go out on the street. We, the night after we played Robertson, I think it was, they come up for sure, they were Robertson. I came around, drove around the one-way street with the law, but to go check on the back locker room, and I came into a situation that's, parents are involved. Out in the middle of the school parking lot, a park over there, yelling, screaming at kids, kids scattering, so it's, it's, it's not a student issue. Then we had one where an adult chased a high school student back onto the campus the other night, so it's, it's a little bit of a mix of who owns the ball.
Thank you, Ms. Bright, I've seen you out here in your.
Oh, thank you. No problem. I'll the color of the ride. Yes, it does. Well, um, we, uh, that way we can get people across the road safely. I mean, it is, it is a hazard, and we, we've talked about that for years, but I think it works. We're, we're about to work through football season, but I think the more we educate everyone, I asked my kids today, what's the speed limit on Seventh Street? 15 miles an hour, so we're anything.
Not 80.
It's not 80. So I, I think, uh, we got some places with COVID and, and some things, and we're getting that back, and with things like PAX and, and good staff, and, and good training in capturing kids' hearts. I think we'll get there. It just takes, it takes some time, and we're going to have to work as, as a team together, and I think we can do that. With a group of kids, I don't know if it's COVID-related, that they're just so happy to be back and doing things. School spirit has been fantastic. You guys, this homecoming parade was awesome. I watched a video of the middle school volleyball game the other day, and all the boys' football teams, all the wood corners, really cheering them on and stuff, so. There, you, it always seems like we only talk about the bad things, but there's so many good things we want to say. I've been proud of you kids, really, you guys want to support each other. And you guys are welcome to attend any of our meetings, because there might be something that's set up here, and you're like, that's not necessary. So we would like to hear from you. So if one of you wants to, if you want to have like a little circle committee, and one of you comes to each one of our meetings, I'll even put a little section into the board packet where you guys get to come and bring stuff to us, instead of us always bringing things to you, so.
When we're able to release some news, uh, I would sure like them to come and visit the office.
Sheesh.
I'm mad you guys saw it.
Say that.
Well, I'll put it this way, we're just in contests, we just made it to the top of the ranking. So it is, it is, it is.
Well, we'll let you know.
It's getting easier, because of course, uh. Kill the bargain, right?
Yeah, it's a bargain.
A bargain.
Take your son beat up NBC, this morning, very good.
They have to release it first. I'll release it second.